Good evening, everybody. I'm glad you all came out. We're gonna start our meeting and I'd like to call to order the Chesterfield Township Planning Commission meeting for June 17th, 2025. And if you would all silence your phones, we'd appreciate it. And with that, we'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I'd like to call roll for the board. Rick LaBelle?
Here.
Kathy Bosberg? Richard Breckhart?
Here.
Brian Kerr is excused. Ralph Jaworski?
Here.
James Kalnowski?
Here.
Mark Renaud?
Here.
Eric Hyder?
Here.
And Carl Leonard? I'm here. Like to make a motion to approve the minutes from June 3rd, 2025. Who supported that? Eric? Motion by Carl Leonard, supported by Eric Hyder, to approve the minutes from June 3rd, 2025. Are there any comments or questions on the minutes? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Motion by Carl Leonard? Supported by Kathy Bosberg? To approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so at this part of the meeting, we're gonna have public comments for three minutes. I just want to explain to everybody that we had the public hearing at the last meeting. Everybody got up to express themselves for or against. The petitioner had a chance, the audience had a chance. So that was closed out. So everything that was said then is in the record. Anything that's brought up tonight, it's not gonna be part of the record. You can go up and talk about anything you'd like, but it's, if it's about the, the public hearing from the last meeting, nothing will be entertained or discussed as far as anything either repeated from last time or even anything new. And that goes for the petitioner as well. So with that, anybody can come up and sign in and you have three minutes. And to make sure the mic's on so we can hear you. Thank you.
Is it on? Did I turn it up? Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
While I'm signing in, I went to the township offices. The website had the meeting shown as the address for the township offices. I barely missed this because there was just a tiny sign on a door that said it was here after hours. So I hope you guys update that. That would be nice.
Yeah, usually, I'm not sure how that usually shows. Thank you for letting us know.
You're welcome. I'm sad that I missed the last meeting and I understand what you said, that whatever I say is not gonna be part of the record or anything like that. But about the Salt River site, just a couple things I'm wondering about. One of them is hopefully traffic and safety has been addressed. I know that when you're driving down 23 mile road, currently, there's no right turn lane to get into the Salt River property. I hope they do put a dedicated turn lane there because it seems like the boat was missed on that creekside. There's no dedicated turn line from Baker onto Washington or Washington back onto Baker when you're putting in all those new homes. So hopefully, for traffic flow and safety, that will happen. I'm wondering if that's the only exit and entrance. Again, traffic and safety. Hopefully, there is another entrance and exit. Also, infrastructure of Chesterfield Township. Again, sorry I missed the last one, but we got redwood apartments going in. We got that creekside and everything. And if they develop this Salt River, which is gonna be humongous, you know, city water and sewers, that getting upgraded? What about the electric, all that infrastructure stuff? I hope that is part of the, the record on what needs to be, needs to be, needs to happen. And I also understand that the, the plot is going to be from, you know, it's going to be reduced, the plots that are gonna go out there. Am I saying the right word, the plot?
The, the size of the?
Yeah. And I don't know what it was before or what it was going to. I mean, I wish I had that information, but that disturbs me too. If it's gonna be so small that it's gonna get so dense in there with so many more homes and stuff like that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And, and a lot of this was talked about at the other meeting. I'm sorry that you couldn't make it.
Me too.
But all of these things are, I'm not sure how it's gonna get voted, but all of these things, we're just approving rezoning. And, and that's pretty much, not approving it, we're entertaining a rezoning on the property, even though it's already established to be built on. It's just a few little changes. So, but thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Please sign in and state your name.
Okay. I live in Blair Meadows. And coming down Baker now, to make a left-hand turn is almost impossible. Coming down Calhoun's the other way to make a left-hand turn is almost impossible. There used to be a left-hand turn signal there, and they took it out about five years ago. And why don't they put that back? Now, plus, we got twice as much traffic now. That's it. Take care of that for me.
Thank you. I'm on it. Anyone else like to make any comments? If you got anything new you'd like to talk about? If not, we can bring it back up?
I only have one simple thing to say is, please don't turn us into a Chester Tucky. You know, I don't wanna be worn.
You need to sign in, ma'am.
Oh, I will, but I don't have my glasses. Oh, you have to sign in before? You have to sign in before I can say that?
No, just that?
I just don't wanna see us at Chester Tucky.
Well, thank you. And with that, I will bring it back up to, oh, come on up.
Is there someone else? Welcome.
Please sign in, state your name.
Good evening. Janice Young. I wasn't here for the public hearing last week. Had some other things going on. But today, I had the unfortunate pleasure of going to my chiropractor down at 23 and Mound. It took me a really long time to get down there and an even longer time to get back home at about 5:00 tonight. So I just wanna mention a couple things about the roads out here. And I know you guys don't really consider traffic an issue, but on 23 mile road, we all know cars have to wait to be left, let out of a business. Guys, all day today, coming home, you have to stop to let somebody pull out. Then when they do, they have to pull into a left-hand turn lane and queue, which we all know is a very illegal and dangerous maneuver to do. But that's the only way you can, you can get in and out of businesses on 23 mile road. The traffic coming off of 23 mile road eastbound, the cars turn right when there's no room for them. They then block the traffic, which backs up 23 mile eastbound even further. We have an abundance of gravel haulers, construction vehicles, semi trucks, cement trucks, delivery trucks, that all impede traffic even further on 23 mile road. I go to the gym in New Baltimore at 5:45 in the morning. And over this last year, I've seen several serious crashes happen between 5:45 a.m. and 7:15 a.m. That's not even a busy time of the day. But the road gets closed. That's how bad the accident is. Right, right at Calhoun's, just a couple weeks ago. See what else? Oh, and Donner, I live off of Donner, so it's kind of a little soft spot for me. But they just opened up the Veterans Pathway there. And at the grand opening, Ms. Anderson from Parks and Rec mentioned how there was 550 crashes on Donner in the last 10 years. I find it interesting that she used data from, from 10 years because I think that probably stretched out the, the data. I mean, I'd like to see what it was over the last five years because a bunch of, majority of it was maybe in the last five years. I'll address that with her later. So I say all this to get to the point is that our roads really can't handle the amount of traffic that's on them. This commission routinely accepts with the state and county, their opinion that 23 mile road is built to handle this amount of traffic. That's BS and we all know it, especially those of us who really drive on it and live here all the time. And drivers can't do the posted speed limit, and they have to sit through multiple lights when there's all the crashes. It just really proves that the roads cannot handle the traffic that's out there. 23 mile road was built way before the current development boom. If back in the day, it was really built to handle the future traffic, which right now, how can it possibly handle any more traffic? And if the roads can truly handle the traffic, there's something else terribly wrong. Too many curb cuts, poorly timed lights, or not enough other roads to take the load off of 23. Part of responsible development is taking these things into, into account. Please do what is best for the current residents when you make your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kay McLeod. Sign in here. I live in Cricklewood condos. And it is a nightmare to try to come out and turn left there as it is with all the traffic and the new construction and everything else. I just think, I've, I've lived in Chesterfield for, since 1997, and I've seen a lot of development. And I think it's a shame that we don't have more green space and they're constantly cutting down all the trees. I mean, do we really need two car washes within the same block on 23 mile? Who does it? Who plans this and who approves these new businesses to come in? I'd like to know how you do that. What's the process? Because that's ridiculous. I mean, we could, we could use a fruit market, a vegetable market, as everybody says on Nextdoor. And as far as the Salt River one goes, it's gonna be all congested there. And why can't we have a nice green space there? It was beautiful property. From what I understand, a lot of the trees got cut down. One had a nesting eagle's nest in it. And I think that's against the law to cut a tree down that has a nest in it. And they built a development behind me, behind Cricklewood condos. And it is ugly. All the houses are crammed together. I don't think there's 10 feet between them. And it's hideous. So I'd like to know how the, how do people decide what goes in our community? You know, another thing is the library. They wanna mow down all the trees there where they have that property. And we've got empty buildings, you know, can't that be, or someplace where there's no trees already that you can put another library? And as far as the Salt River goes too, I know I'm jumping around a little bit, but is there federal grants that could come in and make that a green space instead of adding more homes? You know, I'd like to know if there's any kind of federal or state funding that could help buy that property for the township? I don't know what the cost is right now for it. But, you know, we could use a nice park that has nice long trails instead of one that's only a half a mile long, so that we could have a healthier community and people can walk and ride bikes and, you know, get some exercise. So I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Good evening. My name's Terrence Moore. I have one question. Last time we were here, we were talking that it's already zoned for RM1 and whatever. And there was a traffic study done for that. So if they were to build the way it's zoned right now, there wouldn't need to be a traffic study. If they rezone, will there need to be a new traffic study? That's my question. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'm gonna bring it back up to the, to the board. Thank you for all your comments. This'll be the last one. Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, I already, legally, I already closed the public comments and brought it back to the board.
He was still standing up here, so.
Carl, hang on a second. Stop. This is a public comment portion of the meeting. The rules of procedure allow residents to stand up and speak for three minutes on any topic that they want. You were clear at the beginning and to put a fine point on it, the record from the last meeting, as you said, is closed. So whatever the board is going to do tonight by way of a vote on Salt River, it's going to be based on the record that was made at the last meeting. The applicant is not permitted to come and supplement the record, nor are the residents. Having said that, this is still public time.
Right.
So anybody that, with, with that caveat, if they still wanna get up and speak, they have that right. So you can't just cut it off.
And, and basically, everything that's being said tonight was said at the last meeting, but it's not, most of it, and, but if you wanna come up, it's fine. But we, there's no consideration. The applicant can't come back up and go back and forth. There's no, there's no debating on it. But go ahead and, and tell us your comments. Thank you.
Thank you for telling me how I'm allowed to comment in the public comment.
It's just, it's just the rules that govern the rules.
I am in fact going to address the documents that have been shared publicly to remind you of what is in them, because that is what needs to be taken into consideration as we paid Giffel Webster to do an analysis on this. And they brought up some very good points and answered them very well. First question, is the proposed zoning consistent with the master plan? Basically, their answer is no. To me, that's good enough. What other impact would the requested rezoning have on public services, utilities, and natural features? A lot of impacts, actually. And it's not really even known what the true impact would be because it hasn't been looked into enough. Has the applicant provided evidence that the property cannot be developed or used as zone? No. Is the proposed zoning district compatible with surrounding uses? Kind of, but not to the density that they are proposing. Will the proposed zoning place a burden on nearby thoroughfares? If so, how would this burden compare with the existing zoning district? Yes, it would, and the impact is unknown because a traffic study has not been done. Is there other land currently available for this use? Yeah, there is. A lot of other available land. Will development of the site under proposed zoning be able to meet zoning district requirements? Unclear, possibly. There's a lot of unclear in here, I think, is the, the message we're trying to get across. Has there been a change in circumstances that would warrant changing the master plan? No. Is rezoning request consistent with the master plan for the area? Again, no. Also, have we done any impact to the residents that live at the other end of the Salt River? What is their plan for erosion maintenance? What is their plan for during construction to prevent chemicals and debris floating down the river? And as we saw in County Line, what's the plane with all the water that's already there? I think it's very clear, per all of the documentation that you guys already paid for, that this should just be a no. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will bring it back up to the board. Anybody on the board have any comments or questions about anything? Yeah, we can go around. Or just whoever wants to jump, whoever wants to jump in? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, right. I skipped a small step. If anybody else wants to come up, please come up now because this will be the last, last one. Well, I kept saying that I was gonna bring it back to the board. So if you got a couple more, I have no problem. I said that right in the beginning. Please come up. Yes, sir.
So a while back when I was a kid, so I've, I've lived off Baker Road my entire life. Until now, I just bought a house out here in Chesterfield Township, just on the street. Years ago, that bowling alley and golf course was sold and a developer bought it, or bought into it to build homes. And it was, it was designated as indigenous land for a burial ground. So how exactly, when that got shut down back when I was younger, how did you guys end up being able to pass all the code for everything else to happen to where you guys can just tear everything down and then now have meetings about it? That stuff was being torn down three months ago. And we're just now coming to meetings within the last month. I mean, how, how exactly did you guys get the code passed when you couldn't before?
None of that, what you're saying, has anything to do with us? The only thing we're considering is?
It does, it does do.
We don't have?
It does have some.
We don't have the process approvals to do.
There should be a process. You guys are in charge of the community and the whole township.
That goes to the elected officials. So I'm just saying.
Who owned, who owned the land then? Who owned, who owned the land and who sold it?
That I'm not aware of.
Well, how, how was it not available for, for homes, but now it is? This has been 15 years it's sat there empty after the golf course left. There's rubber running through it, there's wetlands, there's people like me and the guy back there that are worried about flooding and everything else. Baker's already flooded in the last couple of years. How do you guys plan to fix all that? What about power, like sewage lines? You know, you, you're gonna have to dig the ground up. If it's a burial ground, how did you guys pass the code to do that? So I would just like to know.
We're not gonna?
You guys are in charge. You guys should know.
We're not gonna go back and forth, but anything you wanna?
Right. Well, that's why I'm here, is because we're having a meeting. I'm supposed to be able to ask you questions.
Right.
And I'm asking, and you guys are telling me you're not in charge of that?
Public hearing is closed. So two weeks ago?
Who, who is closed?
The public hearing. This was talked about two weeks ago. It's, it's, it's done now.
This is a public hearing. We're all still here.
And that's why you're up there talking about?
But what, now, now it doesn't matter because it was two weeks ago?
It does matter, but?
That's wrong. And there was money put in somebody's pocket, that somebody's pockets got lined to be able to build houses out there, when it hasn't been able to for 15 years. And that's a fact. There's no way in or out of there, except next to Wendy's.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jeanne Amici, and I live adjacent to the former Salt River Golf Course. I'm here again to express my strong opposition to the proposed rezoning of the property from commercial to multi-unit residential and to plan a sub, plan to develop a subdivision on that site. I know this is, you know, same thing again. But first, the lands includes wetlands, which play a vital role in flood prevention, water purification, and supporting local wildlife. Developing on wetlands is not only environmentally irresponsible, it, it could increase flood risk for existing homes and damage our community's natural resources. Second, the current plan shows only one access point in the, into the development. This is a serious safety concern. In an emergency, first responders could be delayed, and heavy traffic in and out of the neighborhood could become a daily hazard. Multiple access points are standard for a reason: public safety. Third, I want to address something deeply troubling. The attorney representing the property owner stated at the June 3rd, 3rd planning meeting, to bring in businesses like a pawn shop, tattoo parlor, or cannabis store, just to name a few, if the rezoning isn't approved. Frankly, this is unacceptable. Zoning decisions should be based on facts, planning, and community impact, not on threats designed to bully the township or intimidate its residents. Finally, many in the community are hearing rumors about a trailer park or manufactured, manufactured housing being placed there instead of traditional homes that were originally suggested in the zoning plan, if the zoning plan does not get approved. If that's the plan, the developer needs to be honest about it. Our community deserves clarity and accountability, not backdoor changes after the zoning is approved. In closing, I urge you to reject this zoning request. This project poses environmental, safety, and ethical concerns that cannot be overlooked. Thank you for your time and for standing with the residents who want thoughtful, responsible growth for our township. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Back again. Can you hear me? Okay. You know, I was at the last meeting, as you guys were. And I know that whatever we talk about today isn't part of your thought pattern. But there are a few things that we do need to think about. I believe this gentleman right here is the one that asked if there was gonna be a traffic survey done. Were you the one? And this gentleman over here evaded the answer by saying, well, there was one done in 2016, so we don't feel it's due now. How many homes have we put up and how many businesses on 23 mile road alone since 2016? I mean, now I understand, we've got Krogers expanding. It's gonna be a super Kroger. We're doing a traffic survey right across from Kroger for the new, what's that coffee place that they wanna? Starbucks. We got a traffic survey going on down on I-94, right across the bridge. So why is this being rushed? If we've got two traffic surveys going that can give you, us an actual number and compare it to the number that he believes is sufficient, I think we're gonna find a big difference in traffic. I mean, we've only lived where we live for a year, and I'm noticing a difference in traffic. You guys lived here your whole? I mean, what do we got, 10 subs going up in this, in Chesterfield right now? Half of them aren't even completed or close to it? And we're going to add more? Then another question that was brought up was about the flooding, and he said, "Oh, don't worry about it, we're going to mitigate the flooding." And what professional decided that? How are they going to mitigate the flooding? By filling in the banks? Then where's that water go? It can only go so high under the bridge, and all of you are aware of the fact that when it floods, it goes up to bridge level, and then it starts backing up, which means anybody on the north end of Salt River or on the other side of 24, they're already getting flooded. They're going to get inundated by that. And if you guys make the decision, and I'm one of them property owners, somebody's going to pay for it, and you know who they're going to be suing, because it was your decision that made that happen. Now, I have heard that Mr. Jarvis does have a lot of friends in the city, goes to all the proper gatherings, one of my neighbors-
I'm sorry.
Goes to him. I know, my three minutes is up, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well, can I say one quick thing?
Real quick.
When he bought this property out of bankruptcy in 2011, he already had an approved set of plans, that it was a single phase in 90-foot lots. He bought them, he had the plans. When he bought their property, he bought those plans. He accepted that, what had already been approved. At worst-case scenario, he should be stuck to have to live with those plans. Single-phase, come in and spend the 15 to 20 million, put in all the infrastructure, and then build.
All right, thank you very much. So I will bring it back to the board. Anybody?
Does there be anybody else?
I'm sorry, I did it again. I'm going to close the public-
Is there anybody else that wants to speak?
Yeah, is there anybody else that wants to speak before I close it? I see nobody's coming up, so we will close the public comments, and there's no public hearings tonight, and we have our regular agenda, and Rick will read our regular agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item A, number 374, requesting to rezone 114.12 acres of property located on the north side of 23 Mile Road, west of Baker Road, from R1A-
Hey, pull the mic up a little bit.
From R1A, One Family, to R1B, Residential One Family, and from C3, General Commercial, to RM1, One Residential Multiple Family. Parcel ID is 15-09-14-100-025. The address is 33633 23 Mile Road. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. With that, does anybody, any of the board members have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a few comments.
I'll just go around the board, then. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question about, we are rezoning from R1A to R1B, and then from C3 to RM1, as was read by our secretary. I would like to ask if our planning coordinator could explain what those three types of zoning mean? We already know, but I would just like to have it stated again. I don't, it doesn't matter, either one of you, you're both right.
So, R1A is the residential one-family district, and I'm guessing you're interested in the uses that can be on that site? Is that correct?
Thank you, yes, the uses.
Okay, so, in the R1A district, permitted uses include agricultural ponds, one-family dwellings, cemeteries that are existing, township buildings and uses, and then accessory structures. There are additional special land uses, but that gets lengthy, so I'll leave it there if that's all right. So, that's what's currently allowed in part of the parcel, and is, what's being proposed are very similar uses in the R1B district. Actually, all the permitted uses are exactly the same. What's different is the lot size that's required. So, in R1A, it has to be 90 by 150 feet, and in R1B, the lot size is 75 by 130 feet. In the C3 district, which is the southern portion of the site, that is our, your general commercial district, this has a longer list of permitted uses, so this is what's currently permitted. You can have professional and medical offices, anything that's permitted in the residential districts, local retail and service establishments, community and regional retail service establishments, so that'd be things like your bigger box stores, clothing rental, coin-operated service machine operations, membership organizations, automotive dealers, hotels and motels, mortuaries, public utility buildings, temporary buildings, garment pressing and dry cleaners, coin-operated laundries, miscellaneous personal services, rental of tools and household goods, appliance repair, museums and art galleries, automotive rental and leasing, dance studios, physical fitness facilities, vet offices, places of worship, and that's the permitted use list. What's being requested for rezoning in that area is the RM1 district, which is multiple family, which would allow any of the uses that are permitted in the surrounding single-family districts. You could also have two-family dwellings, apartments, multiplexes, townhouses, and then tourist homes, lodging homes, and boarding homes.
What was the last thing you said?
Tourist home, lodging house, and boarding home.
Okay. If it, to have a mobile home park, what would that zoning recommend, recommendation? I'm sorry, the number, what would that be?
There's a, there's a site district for that, it's the Mobile Home Park Residential District.
It's a totally different-
Totally different district. And I will also note, so, even though I read off all those lists that could, or the list of uses that could be there, the applicant has provided with their rezoning request a site plan saying that they will put these houses with this lot size on the site. So that doesn't always come to us with the rezoning. Sometimes the applicant will just say, "I want to rezone my site to this district," and I don't know what I'm going to do with it yet, but I know I want to do something in line with these uses. Tonight, the board is looking at a rezoning, that's a conditional rezoning, that has a concept plan that's tied to it, which is where you're seeing the layout, you're seeing the number of units and that sort of thing. So, if it were to be approved, what you see in the design is what the applicant would be agreeing to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hyder, you have any questions or comments?
I've got more comment. Mr. Palin, was there any permits pulled at all or needed to on the tree cutting down or any cleaning up the site prior to this?
There was not, no.
There was not?
No.
Was there needed to be?
So, there, originally when this was approved back in 2016, there was a tree survey done, and a tree removal was approved at that point in time. There is a percentage of trees that need to be, so we have a list of protected trees that are regulated and then unregulated. So you're permitted to clear, scrub, brush, unregulated trees, trees that are dying, diseased, and then you have to preserve a certain number of the canopy. So, the property owner was, did receive a copy of the ordinance. We were informed that they were working with, I don't want to say DEQ, but it's Eagle, with the trees by the river and what they were allowed and not allowed to do, and that anything that was removed beyond what was permitted, I think it's 10, I don't know off the top of my head, I think it's 10% preservation's required for residential, that anything additional would be replanted. I don't have exact numbers, but there is some trees still left out there. I know it's been said that all the trees are gone, but that's not the case, but until we have a tree survey-
Okay.
Oh, it's 35%? Okay, yeah, so.
Well, I guess my question, there was a lot of residents that made comments about an eagle's nest that have been supposedly torn down, three. That is a federal law protected by the Bald Eagle Protection Act. How was that demolished and torn out? That's, that's a protected bird, so do we know for a fact that that tree was particularly torn down without any type of agreement?
What tree service is out there cutting them down?
Except, except-
Don, I'm just making a comment.
Sorry, we can't have a bunch of yelling.
Mr. Chair, except for the fact that the Planning Commission's jurisdiction is to make a recommendation to the Township Board on a rezoning request, which deals with land use. Whether or not they violated the federal's endangered species or the Bald Eagle Act is between the owner of the property and the United States government. The Chesterfield Township has no skin in that game. More importantly, we don't have any legal authority to deny a rezon, to deny a rezoning because they may have violated some federal statute.
Oh, I understand that, I'm just making a comment.
But it's an irrelevant point.
Oh, I know.
It has nothing to do with the rezoning of the property. I just, look, I'm here for one reason, and that's to make sure that whatever you do, you follow the parameters of our zoning ordinance, and you do it legally. And I don't want to see a decision go to the board or go to the court-
That is correct.
-where the decision was made on a federal endangered species statute, because a federal judge or a state judge is going to throw that case out, upside down, and I don't want to do that. So stick to the Planning Commission issues, that's got nothing to do with the decision.
Oh, I know that, okay. Go ahead, I'm done.
All set? I looked through the documents, and excuse me if I, if it's listed somewhere, but how many houses were on the original zoning plan? How many, how many houses could that support if you stuck to the original zoning plan? And this might catch you off-guard, I apologize.
That's okay, so you're talking about the original consent judgment that was, that was made? You know, I apologize, I don't know that I have that number. Jonathan, do you happen to have that number?
I don't know if we'd have that.
I don't have that number.
And I, Jonathan might remember, I don't know that we saw a concept plan at that site, but we had lot sizes that were drawn up.
Well, I'm just trying, what I'm trying to get to is, in my comment, is that it appears that with the consent rezoning, like you pointed out, they're basically saying this is what we're going to build.
Correct, yes, the conditional rezoning.
So, if we were to stick with the original zoning, that property could support probably 147 units, I'm guessing. I'm not a developer, I can't do the math, but my guess is, even with, it's a slight reduction, it falls right in between the 90 by 150 and the 75 by 130. It's right smack dab in the middle, and my guess, again, it's my guess, I'm not a developer, but that property under the current zoning could support more than the 147 homes on that property. So there is a possibility, under the existing zoning, that there could be more houses there. The only other biggest variance that I'm seeing is the C3 request to RM1. So, and essentially, we're swapping commercial for condos. So, I think we're all in agreement there, and I really like the conditional rezoning. We're seeing what we're going to get. So I just wanted to make sure my thought process was in line with others. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Klonowski?
Nothing from me, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brokaw?
I have a few things. First, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
The acoustics here are terrible, and I want to make sure you guys hear what I'm going to say. Two weeks ago, you know, we were told, "Hey, go walk that property." You guys haven't walked the property. I rode my bike around, it's private property, I'm not allowed to just walk on someone's private property, but I rode my bike around it, and I took a look at it. And I can see where there's a lot of trees knocked down, and it doesn't look well-kept-up at all. But that's today. If we have a conditional rezoning that goes through and they redevelop that, it'll look different for sure. I don't know if everyone's going to like it or not, but it'll look different. And the engineering analysis, analyses, that'll be done, you know, the township has engineers as well as the applicant. We'll have to make sure that these engineers talk, and that safety is addressed, and that water mitigation is addressed. Otherwise, the township engineers aren't going to approve something that makes it worse. We're just, I'm an engineer, I know that. We're so crazy anal, it's unbelievable. I'm a recovering engineer, is what I tell my wife. During the public comment portion, you guys need to understand, we're not being disrespectful to you. If you ask a question, because normally you ask a question, you get a direct answer, but in the, in the public comment section, it's a, it's a monologue. We're supposed to listen and not comment until now, where you guys are listening and I'm commenting. So if you're asking a question, and you're pointing at me, and I'm not, I'm not answering, it's not because I'm disrespecting you at all, it's because I'm trying to follow the rules of the game, even though I might have an answer that I'm dying to blurt out, but I can't. So, we're trying to be very respectful, and I appreciate your being respectful right now. The last thing, rumors, you know, I can't address rumors. I, I don't know what you're hearing, and I hope it's not all bad, because some of these things are going to be good. The township is growing, and if traffic is a concern, it'll be addressed, or it won't be approved at the higher level. That's all I really wanted to say for right now, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reddell?
Yeah, most of my, most of my fellow board members here have addressed most of what I was going to touch on, but I find it interesting, because I, I'm a little familiar with the previous owner of that property, because he was the builder that all but destroyed a subdivision that I lived in, and I know why he didn't build in there, and I'm not going to go into those details. So I was actually pretty happy when someone else took that parcel over. At the end of the day, what we're talking about here is that this is private property. No, it doesn't match what's in the master plan, because at the time the master plan was developed, it was a golf course. It also notates in there that it is private property, and if that's the case, the next best use would be single-family housing, which is what it's zoned for right now. If we do absolutely nothing, houses can be built there, right now. The only other change is up front in that commercial district, where it could be a tattoo parlor or any number of things, but this is a conditional rezoning, they are looking to put in precisely what they are applying for, and because of that, we know exactly what's going in there. To Mr. Brokaw's statements, I'm actually in the mortgage, housing, finance world, no builder is going to invest the time and the millions of dollars it takes without knowing they can't engineer that property to make sure it doesn't flood. That's just a reality. No one's investing that many millions of dollars, it's just not going to happen. So with that stated, I think this rezoning actually is a better idea than where it's at right now, because we know precisely what we're getting. Not rumors of mobile parks, not anything else that may or may not be going in there. We'll know precisely what we're getting, some condos and single-family residences. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lebel?
I do just have one comment. What we're doing here tonight is a, making a recommendation to the elected officials as to zone or not rezone the, this property. So, we are not the, we, our decision tonight is only a recommendation. The elected officials could go in a completely different direction, which they have on us in the past. So, I just want to make everybody aware that we don't have the last say. So, thank you.
Thank you. The chair doesn't have anything to add, everything is pretty much brought up that I would have had a thought on, so with that, I'm going to ask the board, I'm going to entertain a motion for this agenda item.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairperson. Regarding rezoning, item 374, parcel ID 150914100, address 33633 23 Mile Road. Regarding rezoning item 374, partial ID 15091410025, address 33633 23 Mile Road, requesting to rezone 114.12 acres of property located on the north side of 23 Mile Road west of Baker, from R1A to R1B and from C3 to RM1. I move to approve this rezoning request for recommendation to the Chesterfield Board of Trustees. Over the past 11 years, the subject property has had no alternative development proposals since the approval of the master plan. Our applicant has provided a proposed rezoning that is in harmony with the Chesterfield Township Master Plan as approved on May 11th of 2021. The proposed zoning district is consistent with the surrounding zoning districts and the surrounding land uses. The proposed density of 1.71 units per acre is well within the existing residential density plan of 1.4 to 2.5 units per acre. For these reasons, I ask the commission to support this rezoning request, making a positive recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, I have a motion and support by Mr. Renault. Can I do a roll call? I'm going to do a roll call on the vote, so we have a motion to approve this rezoning, and we have it supported. Kathy Bosberg?
Aye.
Eric Hyder?
No.
Ralph Jaworski?
Yeah.
James Klonowski?
Aye.
Rick LaBelle?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So with that being said, the motion passes. Thank you all for coming. I'd just like to ask the group, we're going to conduct some more business, if you want to stand and listen to that, you're more than welcome to. If not, we'd ask that you file out so we can continue on. Thank you.
Item B is Camden Estates Site Plan 2024-2025. Preliminary site review condominium, R1-B slash CJ consent judgment, 52.3 acres, north side of 25 Mile Road, east of Grashit. The parcel ID is 15-09-03-300.
Hold on, hold on. It's hard to hear anything, thank you.
-005. Ms. Osborn?
Thank you. So in your packets tonight, there is a review letter dated June 4th for the preliminary site condo review. During this preliminary phase, the Planning Commission is really looking at the plan more conceptually, looking at the basic layout and the roads, the configuration overall of the site, and consistency of the plans with the zoning ordinance. I'll note that on page one, I had a comment that we still needed the master deed and a copy of the restrictive covenants. The applicant was able to provide those to us, so that's been taken care of, so we actually don't have any outstanding items. But things for the Planning Commission to consider again would be the general layout and potentially some flood risk and mitigation. So just a little bit of history on the site, the site was entered into consent judgment back in 20, excuse me, 2003, and that allowed for up to 156 single-family residential lots. This plan came before the Planning Commission earlier this year and was seeking a recommendation to the Township Board to approve an amendment to that existing consent judgment. So you have seen these plans before, because they came looking for a recommendation to amend that consent judgment. That went through the Township Board, the Township Board approved the requested changes in April, and so now they're back to you with a site plan that you've seen before that now meets that amended consent judgment. So these changes now allow for 179 single-family detached units, and 166 of the units are located on lots that are 60 by 120 feet, and there are 13 units on lots that are a little bit bigger, the 75, by at least 120, some of them are 120, some of them are 130 feet. The consent judgment is still being finalized, but allows for a shorter front setback than what's required in, required in the R1B district. It allows the road width to be 28 feet and the sidewalks to be five feet wide. So again, tonight, the, the goal for the Planning Commission is to provide some feedback to the applicant about the, the concept plan. Moving into the middle of page two, a little bit more about the sites. The sites will, the condos will all be for, for sale, they range from a little less than 1,400 to 1,800 square feet in size. And then the project also includes new water and sewer lines, street lighting, a community clubhouse with a workout facility, recreational green belt pathways, open space, playscape and walking path. And then, as I mentioned, all their application materials have, have been provided. At the top of page three, we get into the dimensional standards for this plan. I'll note that we've kind of thought about the, the concept plan in three sections. One is from 25 Mile to Fish Creek, the second section from Fish Creek to the utility easement, and the third section from the utility easement to the north lot boundary, with most of the units being in that third section at the, between the utility easement and the north lot boundary. Really, the, all the standards have been met in terms of dimensional requirements. Things like the building height and lot coverage will have to be reviewed when building plans come in. The consent judgment currently allows for the height of the buildings to exceed the 28 feet that's required in the ordinance. The Planning Commission could include in a motion that the building heights have to meet the ordinance standards. And again, the, the minimum floor area per unit at the bottom of page four, that will come in with building plans. They, the applicant has provided four designs, two one-story designs and two two-story designs, and so the Planning Commission may wish to discuss if there are other alternatives that have been considered. Moving into page five, we get into the site standards. In terms of streets, the applicant's proposing nine new private streets. The, this development will be connected to the existing Concordia condominium division that's to the west, and so that will provide a second access to the site. And that meets the, one of the subdivision requirements that subdivisions with more than 65 lots have two or more access roads to another major road. So there will be the one off 25 Mile Road and then the one through Concordia that loops through the other neighborhood. The applicant did say in their narrative that they had thought about adding another access drive along 25 Mile Road, but that would only serve the, the units at the south end of the site, and so they, they felt that that really wouldn't, wouldn't help a whole lot. As I mentioned, all the streets are 28 feet wide, and that is meeting the revised consent judgment, and that width is not uncommon in other areas, similar developments in the community. Terms of blocks, they have blocks with the right length and the, the sidewalks that are required, both within the development and along 25 Mile Road. The lot does have some wetlands on the site, has a lot of hydroxic soils in the central part of the site and to the north, and so you, you may wish to discuss flooding risk with the applicant. You can see the map on page six of where those things are located. The applicant has proposed two detention ponds at the south end of the site to manage stormwater and also provide recreation activities. As part of the development standards, landscape easements are required to be used when there are two incompatible uses that are adjacent to each other. The site is currently surrounded by vacant or agricultural land, with the exception of the condos that are directly west, and the surrounding parcels are similarly zoned with single-family residential or multifamily residential, so we didn't feel that there would be a need for a landscape easement, but we, but the applicant has provided one at the south end of the site along 25 Mile Road. And we'll be looking for the details related to that, the berm and the landscaping, when we get to final site plan review. And then the consent judgment calls for the landscape plans again to be provided, the final site plan. In terms of flood planes, the plans will be reviewed by the County Public Works Commissioner and the Water Resources Commission of the Department of Natural Resources, so you can rest assured that, that there'll be others checking that. And then in terms of trees, they have agreed to keep the, the shrubs that are near the right-of-way, and they are, they have one tree proposed per lot and are adding trees on that berm along 25 Mile Road that I mentioned. And again, the, the landscaping and screening details will come with final site plan review. So that's all I have, happy to answer questions if you have any.
So is the applicant here? Would you like to come up, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Tom Callis, address is 31350 Telegraph Road, Suite 201, and that's in Bigham Farms, Michigan. With me also is Mr. Guy Rizzo, the owner and the developer of the project. So again, this is a consent judgment that was amended. The consent judgment, actually, just to correct the record, has been finalized between Mr. Seibert and myself, and actually has been entered with the court. It's been sent, a copy has been sent to Mr. Seibert, and I sent a copy, certified copy to the Register of Deeds for recording. So the plan that we submitted is compliant, as you can see by the Planning Consultants' review letter. This is providing, again, 179 site, detached site condo sites, 166 will be 60 by 120, and 13 up front by the drain and by the, the mile road will be 75 by 120 size lots. We do meet the terms of the consent judgment. To the extent there's any modifications or revisions, again, we still have to go through final site plan and engineering review, this is preliminary review. We have to deal with the county drain or Public Works Office or county roads, so any items that need to be amended or corrected will take place during the review process and obviously will be addressed and modified at that time. So we're here to answer any questions you may have. We're compliant with, with the ordinance and the, and the consent judgment, specific items that were in there, and again, you know what you're getting, because this is a consent judgment or an amendment, and what you see is, is obviously what you'll be getting.
All set?
That's it, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Bosberg?
No additional comments.
Eric Hyder? Ralph Jaworski? James Klonowski?
Yeah, the consent judgment called for 28-foot height, is that correct on that, 28-foot?
Width.
Oh, that-
Width, width of the roads.
Oh.
Oh, you're talking about building height, I'm sorry, building height. Yes, building height, 28-foot building height for, hang on, let me double check that. Yes, so the consent judgment allows for 28-foot building height.
And what is our ordinance call for on that?
In the R1B district, the maximum building height is 28 feet as well, look at that.
Oh, okay.
Why did we have a note that it was different? Sorry about that.
Okay, very good. Also, the streets are 28 feet, but that's part of the consent judgment, so that will be, that's, that's it on that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Nothing else from me, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brokaw?
R1B district, what is the density range, units per acre?
So I don't have a units per acre, but the minimum lot size is 9,750 square feet, so if you round up to 10,000, it'd be 4.3 acres, 4.3 units per acre approximately.
Thank you.
Mr. Renault?
Just a quick question, I was noticing on your concept plan, I'm going to call it a concept plan, that looks like units, I'm guessing, from like 68 to 63-ish or so, it looks like they're going to be overlapping with wetlands. Have you given any, any thoughts to how that's going to be addressed, or is that going to be a problem with building there?
Those will be addressed during the site plan and engineering review process with Eagle and whatever modifications need to be made to meet the ordinance will obviously be made, so.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LaBelle?
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. One, one comment, there was something that was brought up last time, and, and I'm sure that you'll address this, but I just want to remind you, when, when you come back for your final site plan review, there's the generator that is sitting in the corner behind Camden, or behind the other development. Talking about screening for that, it is large, it's loud, just wondering what we're going to do with that, and of course, we'll discuss that when, when you come back for the final site plan review.
Sure.
And I don't remember the road that goes through the existing condo complex, do we determine if that is a public road already?
We did confirm, yes, Concordia is public.
It is a public road already.
Yes, and we're connecting to it.
Okay. And then, I guess my, my last question is, we've, we've got a consent judgment written here, the consent judgment is very clearly states that, at least in my opinion, electrician's opinion, not a lawyer's opinion, that the, that the way that the, the drawing was produced is what you're going to build, as well as the elevations of the homes.
Correct.
So because it's part of this consent judgment, I would think that, that you pretty much already committed to the elevations that were given to us back in February and are part of the consent judgment. Could you clarify on that, please?
Yes, so we submitted building elevations and floor plans as part of the amendment to the consent judgment, and those are part of the agreement, so that's what we intend to build. Now, there are, there's some language as, as, you know, with township approval, as market changes, market conditions change, consumer demand changes, we do have the ability to modify those, but not without the township's consent, so.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. The chair has nothing to add. So do you have anything else to add?
Nothing.
All set? With that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, make more motion to approve Camden Estates Site Plan 2024-25. This is just a preliminary review of the site condominium project. The applicant will be required to come back before this board with a final site plan approval, or a final site plan for approval. It is in harmony with the surrounding area, there is a consent judgment, which makes our job easier. With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Support.
I have a motion to approve by Rick LaBelle, supported by James Klonowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
There are no presentations or reports tonight. Anything from the planning commissioners, you have a three-minute slot, anybody'd like to say anything? I'll just let you jump in. Anybody's all set? Well, with that, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:05.